I want to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education. Order. Everyone please stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance and the national anthem.
No, it's time even after. How do you say it's time even after?
Not now.
Everyone, please join me with invocation. Gracious God and Creator of all things great and small, we come before you tonight asking your guidance. We offer a prayer of thanksgiving for the recovery of the thirteen people from the cave in Thailand, while we remember the families of the one individual who died trying to help them. We pray for peace in the world. We pray for the soldier killed this past weekend in Afghanistan and pray for his family. We pray for all our armed forces serving around the globe that they may be safe from harm and for their families that they may remain strong. We pray for peace in Central America so that those, their citizens can stay in their country. May the leaders of those countries strike to eliminate the violence. Lastly, we thank you for, that we live in a country where people can disagree and remain civil. May all people learn to tolerate those whom they did not agree with and learn to work to a common good. We pray for all our leaders, local, state, and federal, to keep the welfare of their people utmost in their minds. Guide this board to help us make wise decisions. This we humbly ask. Amen.
Amen.
Color guard, forward march. Color guard, left wheel. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, left wheel. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, close colors. Color guard, close. Color guard, recover. Color guard, retreat. Okay, everybody may be seated. All right, I want to take an opportunity to thank our color guard tonight, who is from Troop 239. Life Scout Nathan Hackney, is a life scout Clay Thompson, Second Class Scout Tim Sibley, Tenaford Scout Caleb Burkett, and Scout Josh Richards, and Scout Master Steve Bilson. So I'm going to let you introduce, they can introduce themselves as to who they are.
My name is Clay Thompson, and I am a life scout, and I've been in scouts for almost six years now, and I'm very close to getting my Eagle Scout, and I am a rising junior in high school.
My name is Nathan Hackney, and I am also a life scout. I've been in scouts for four years and will also be getting my Eagle soon. Um, I am a freshman in high school.
My name is Josh Richards. Uh, this is my first year in scouting, and, uh, yeah.
My name is Caleb Burkett. Um, this is my second year in scouting, and, um, oh, wait, second and a half, I guess? Okay, and, um, I'm a rising eighth grader.
I'm Tim Sibley. I have been in scouts for three years. I am a rising eighth grader.
And we want to thank Scout Master Steve Bilson, who used to be a member of this board for bringing his scouts. He's done this a number of years, and thank you, Steve. Next item, let's call the roll, please. Here.
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 You have before you the agenda. Do I hear a motion to either, well, first, let me ask, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Please remove the closed session at the end, there's no need for that.
Okay.
Need for approval of the revised agenda.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it is approved. Next item, is the approval of the minutes of the interim meeting of May 30th, 2018, redistricting work session of May 30th, 2018, and the regular meeting of June 5th, 2018. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
Don't move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, they are approved.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think we do need the closed session at the end. There was one small legal matter regarding an offer to settle on a small legal matter I emailed the board about.
Okay.
I need the board to make a decision on.
All right, all right. Is that going to be, is that the right citation for it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, we will have our closed session at the end of the meeting. All right. Recognition of Achievement, Community Partners, the YWCA.
Good evening. In Ms. Quattlebaum's absence, we'll have the recognitions of achievement. Tonight, we'll begin by highlighting our community partnership with the YWCA. I'd like to introduce Sharice Hart, Executive Director, who will share with how, share with everyone how her organization benefits youth across the district through its programs. Ms. Hart?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Higgins, fellow members of the New Hanover County School Board, and Superintendent Markley, thank you for this opportunity to present the YWCA's programs and partnership with New Hanover County Schools this evening. So the YWCA, for one hundred and four years, the YWCA Lower Cape Fear has served the greater Wilmington community by providing a variety of health, educational services, and social services for women, children, and families who need us most. Our mission is eliminating racism, empowering women, and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. The YWCA has a variety of programs, but I'm going to quickly highlight the programs that serve children who are enrolled in New Hanover County Schools. First, we have our TOTSPAD, our Early Childhood Education Program, where we are preparing young children to be kindergarten-ready. Second, we have our after-school and summer camp programs. We pick up students from over seventeen schools across New Hanover County and serve over two hundred and fifty children every year in our after-school and summer camp programs. Our Grandparents Support Network program serves one hundred and fifty individuals, including ninety children who are being raised by their grandparents, and because of the opioid crisis, we've seen a significant increase in the need for that program. And lastly, the program that I'm going to speak a bit more about this evening is our What's Wrong With Different program. What's Wrong With Different is an anti-bullying program that places an emphasis on diversity, and it's a program that's conducted at New Hanover County Elementary Schools, and we serve third graders across the system. The What's Wrong With Different program has actually been recognized by the YWCA of the USA as a hallmark program, and we've been doing this program for over fifteen years. The program focuses on diversity, culture, ancestry, and self-esteem for third-grade students in New Hanover County. We use a hands-on approach to teach students to value, appreciate, and respect differences between people, and we do this by partnering with counselors in the New Hanover County School System to schedule presentations throughout the year. So the program is facilitated by a volunteer, a group of volunteers, who begins the discussion with a set of key terms, and we ask students what their definition is of diversity, ancestry, culture, the equator, and, and, and also talking about ways that they are different and ways that they are similar. And what's interesting is that the students get so excited about the differences and discussion on culture, because this is where they talk about the type of music that they listen to, they talk about the different foods that they eat, they talk about the different clothing that they wear, and the different things that they celebrate. And we ask every student to go home and talk about their ancestry, and talk about where they come from. Some students know, some students don't know, but we want to have a safe, fun, and engaging conversation with their students, and they really, really enjoy it. So, last year, in the 2017 through 2018 school year, we served over twelve hundred students in New Hanover County Schools with our presentation. And the ten schools that were served last year were Alderman, Anderson, Castle Hayne, Carolina Beach, Cottington, College Park, Gregory, Murrayville, Sunset Park, and Wrightsboro. Now, we'll highlight that all elementary schools have received the program at some point over the fifteen years, but due to the fact that this program is led by volunteers, we were only able to get into ten schools this year. It's so interesting, because the students love the program so much, they want us to come back, but we are limited, so we are working on ways to provide a second phase of the program so that we can continue the discussion. So after every session, we always conduct a survey, and the results of the survey are as follows. Ninety-five percent of student participants reported that they will include people who are different than them in class activities. Ninety-five percent of teachers reported that students made progress toward fewer misunderstandings in the classroom, and this makes it easier for them to do what they need to do, which is focus on educating our children. And one hundred percent of teachers reported that facilitators created a safe environment for their students to share and engage. So again, we want to reduce bullying in the classrooms, and one way to do that is by addressing the differences that we have amongst one another. So a quote from one of our counselors at Wrightsboro Elementary School, Linda Russ, she stated, "One particular class that was having difficulties among themselves in regards to diversity issues was very enthusiastic during the presentation." And again, we always receive requests to come back. So, again, our goal is to expand. We hope to one day get into the middle school phase, because we all know that that's a very difficult and fun and trying time for, for our students, but we want to discuss anti-bullying there as well. And this program enables us to have conversations that may be difficult to have at home or even in the classroom setting, so we take that weight off of the teachers. Thank you for your time and this opportunity, and if you all have any questions, there's additional information in orange folders that are placed in front of you, and you can always reach out to the YWCA and email me for any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions at this time?
I do, I have one. Did you say the anti-bullying program is third graders?
Yes, so the program is designed for third graders at this point.
And was there a reason for picking that particular age group?
Yes, that's an excellent question. So the reason that we decided to serve third graders is because during that grade, they have a discussion on the equator, and so when they're talking about the equator, they talk about what people look like who live closer to the equator, and what people look like who live further away from the equator, so we're able to open that conversation about skin color differences, we're able to talk about the culture and cultures that live near the equator, and people who are from cultures who live further away, and talk about those differences and embrace those. So that's, I think it's that third grade phase or that grade level is, it makes it easier for them to understand those concepts and feel much more comfortable talking about those concepts.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
All right, next recognition. The next recognition is something that I'm sure New Hanover County and New Hanover High School is very proud of. Not only did they bring home a state championship in football, but they brought home a state championship in baseball also. I don't know if there's any other school in the state that has two state championships this year.
We're going to say no.
Well, okay, that's right, that's right. Orange block.
Absolutely. Okay, we are proud tonight to introduce the New Hanover High School Wildcats baseball team, who recently won the Division 3A State Championship. The Wildcats defeated Crest High School out of Shelby, North Carolina, and shut them out, two games to nothing. This time, I want to invite Coach Rich Foye, assistant coaches, members of the state champions Wildcat baseball team, to please come forward and accept the recognition on behalf of the board. We also ask the principal, I know Dr. Morgan is not here, but Mr. Cummings, the AP, come on up here with your team, and if Keith Moore's here, the AD, I'd like him to come forward as well.
Do you find if the rest of the board can...
We would also, we would also like to recognize Jake Cuba, who was presented with the Sportsmanship Award at the state championship. Jake? I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here for just a moment, being the old guy here and been around New Hanover County for a long time. This is really kind of a historic win, going back to the days when Coach Buck Hardy coached the New Hanover baseball team, a long line of great baseball. Coach Foye has stepped in and filled those shoes, and a great athletic tradition in New Hanover High School, and got a lot of history right here with Coach Moore, the AD, and his daddy being a longtime principal at New Hanover High School. It's just a really good day for New Hanover County, so congratulations, fellows, and good luck in whatever you're going to do next.
All right, next item on our agenda is the call to the audience. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, however, time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. Having said that, first person to speak is Ann York.
Good evening, everybody. I'm, I'm Dr. Ann York. I am the New Hanover County NAACP Executive Committee Member, also member of the Parents' Council, and Chair of our EXO program. The first thing I wanted to announce is that the New Hanover County NAACP will be holding a candidate forum for school board candidates and county commission candidates at the Martin Luther King Center on Tuesday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And everyone's invited, and the Parents' Council will be sending out to the candidates, school board candidates, a white research paper on minority suspensions in elementary schools in New Hanover County. It's an issue that we feel is alarming, and it needs to be addressed by the New Hanover County Schools and the board as soon as possible. On a happy note, we will be leaving Thursday morning at 4:00 a.m. Four chaperones, seven students from Laney, Wilmington Early College School, Isaac Bear Early College High School, and Capeford Academy. We're very proud of these students, they're all local gold medal winners in multiple categories in EXO. It's the fortieth year EXO has been sponsored by the National NAACP Youth and College Division, and this is our second year to participate in Nationals. So we will be recruiting for the 2018-19 season, and probably August will start early September, so stay tuned for that. One other thing, I see I have a couple seconds left. I did want to make an announcement. Many years ago, my son is thirty-one, so it's been quite a while, he went to the North Carolina State Governor's School, which is a program for high school juniors, rising seniors, that allows them to experience what college is like before they go, so that they can feel comfortable going. There's one in Raleigh, and then there's one in Winston-Salem, the East and West. They are eligible in multiple categories, from academics to the arts. The deadline for eleventh graders this year is coming up in November, so I would encourage all of our very gifted high school juniors, rising seniors, to talk to their counselors about applying for this. It's free, and it's an experience that is life-changing, so I know it was for my son. So thank you very much.
Randy Johnson. Randy Johnson. All right, and that's...
Just to note that we send a full slate to Governor's School every year.
Very good. It is a wonderful program. All right, next thing on our agenda is a report from Head Start, Mr. Schell.
As you know, New Hanover County School Board is a fiduciary for a federal program for three, four-year-olds known as Head Start. We operate that out of Dorothy B. Johnson, and as fiduciaries, we report on it each month at our board meeting. That's what we're doing tonight. I think it's always important to notify the public so that they're aware that we are separate in our view of this and the decisions that we make in conjunction with the Policy Council. You have two items in front of you. The item there is a liaison report, which talks, or speaks to the two-hundred-and-sixty-three four-year-olds that are in the program, and we generally talk about the items for that particular month. So we are, even though we operate on a fiscal year for the county school system of July 1 through June 30, the grant that we receive from the federal government that we operate under ends in April. So we're in the, we're reporting on the first month, which is the month of May, in our report here. The, not much to add to what you have in front of you, and certainly the public can have access to this on the agenda. I will point out that there are a number of extracurricular activities each month that Johnson Elementary has. The number that we speak of, the training, one of the concepts we've talked about before is conscious discipline, and how that is such a help to the teachers as they understand the children in extraordinary ways, and staff, staff training went on in the month of June for that. You also have an expenditure report before you that is for the one month ending May 31, and it's, as you would expect, one month, you're eight and a half, nine percent through the year, and that's what the expenditures represent, mostly salaries and benefits as the programs have not kicked off in a huge way at this point. And then the next item, it's a little off-topic, but we wanted to do tonight, or off-agenda that we wanted to do, was if I could ask Dr. McCarty to come up, please? As you know, the superintendent has made recommendations to the board about assignments, and I thought it would be, since we are kicking this year off, July 1st, I thought it would be helpful for the community and the board to, to meet Dr. McCarty, and I have a little information here. She was a high school English teacher for eleven years, assistant principal serving Title I schools for ten years, former principal at College Road Early Childhood Center. I Schools for 10 years, former principal at College Road Early Childhood Center. She earned her doctorate in education leadership with dissertation focused on strategies to engage diverse parents in school community. She transferred this July 1st to serve as a principal for the Johnson Pre-K Program. As a high school teacher, she has seen struggles of teenagers in reading, writing, problem-solving, social, emotional development. Having the opportunity, these are her words, having the opportunity to serve at the pre-K level provides the opportunity to establish a foundation targeting the whole child that ensures a more successful experience in learning and life as students grow and develop, and develop. So, I would like to welcome her to this and ask her if she'd like to make a comment or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schell. It's an honor and a privilege, and I look forward to serving Johnson Pre-K in the coming years. Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is information. You have any information for us?
Uh, no.
Okay. Administrative personnel, superintendent's evaluation contact, contract, and I see my name is beside that. All right. Do I hear any motions with respect to the superintendent's contract?
I knew that we extend his contract for a year, which would give him four years, the same as what our principals received.
Second. I have a motion and a second for an extension of an additional year to the superintendent's contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Okay, four, three, I think it is. All right, so congratulations on the extension.
Well, thank you to the board. I appreciate the vote of confidence.
And I'd like to say that I appreciate what you bring and what you do for us. We just disagree on terms of the contract, but thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
We have written a short release with respect to Dr. Markley, and I will read it at this time. The Board of Education has completed its annual evaluation of Dr. Timothy Markley, Superintendent of New Hanover County Schools, and is pleased with the progress our system is making as we strive to provide a quality education in a variety of settings to meet the more diverse needs of our students. The Board appreciates the superintendent's leadership and guidance as we work to address the building capacities by developing a viable plan that follows the Board's guiding principles for redistricting. That is our statement. All right, next item on the agenda is administrative contracts. Dr. Markley.
First of all, thank you for the kind words. It is a pleasure to work here. Yeah, my apologies for missing my first board meeting in 15 years last month.
You want to show them why?
It's hard to get here when you're in a hospital bed, so would like to thank my wife who's here tonight, who has been stuck nurse-mating me for the last month, and, but this is the fun time of year. We have a lot of vacancies that come up because of retirements, movements, and promotions, so we have a long list of administrative recommendations to go through tonight. Two ways we can do this, we can do each one individually and approve them individually, or I can announce them, and we can approve them as a group.
Well, I think if we do them individually, it gives us an opportunity to recognize them as you go through them.
Perfect. All right, our first one is for Carolina Beach Elementary School. Ms. Cindy Wartell has retired. Now, she's not here, but I'd like to publicly thank her for her time and service at Carolina Beach. She's a tough one to replace. Ms. Deanna Leek, who currently serves as the Assistant Principal at Murray Middle School and was the administrative intern at Hoggard and Burgah Middle School. Additionally, she was a North Carolina Principal Fellow at UNCW, and her contract will be effective June, until June 30th, 2020. She has a BA in elementary ed and a master's in school administration, both from UNCW, so it is my pleasure to recommend Deanna Leek.
Did you hear?
She is in Alaska on a cruise, which seems to be the theme this year, because there are three, four other administrators who either have gone to Alaska or are on the way to Alaska.
Oh, well.
I move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Our next recommendation is for... Is for Cottington Elementary School. The recommendation is Graham Elmore, who is here with his family. Graham currently serves as an assistant principal at Forest Hills Elementary School and is also a regional chief camp principal this summer for a half-day, one more. Previously served as a teacher at Roland Gries and the baseball coach at New Hanover High School. You just missed it, Graham. Completed his administrative internship at College Park and at Hoggard High School. He was a North Carolina Principal Fellow program. His contract will also be effective until June 30th, 2020. He has a BA in middle grades education with a concentration in math and science and a master's in school administration from UNCW.
Do I hear a motion?
Send it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Mr. Elmore, if you will stand up and introduce the folks you brought with you.
My name's Graham Elmore, I'm from White Kelsey. Just want to thank you all for the opportunity. I'm excited to get started tomorrow, because teachers are coming on Thursday, kids are coming a week from tomorrow, so we've got a lot to do and a little bit of time, but I'm very, very excited. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Our next recommendation is for the Howe Pre-K Center. I am recommending Christina May. Ms. May currently serves as the Assistant Principal of Mount Holly Middle School in Gaston County. Previously served as a literacy coach and RTL intervention facilitator and second, third, and fifth grade teacher with the Charlotte MEC School System. Her contract will be effective until June 30th, 2020. She has a bachelor in science and elementary ed from York College in Pennsylvania, a master's in school administration from Appalachian State, and has already 12 credits towards her doctoral program with the University of North Carolina at Charlotte.
Do I hear a motion?
Send it.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Did you hear?
She's not here, but I believe Mr. May is here. You'll actually get to meet him in just a moment. There are, they have three young children going all the way to seven months, and so he got to make the four-hour drive, and she stayed home with the children.
Okay.
Our next recommendation is for Assistant Principal at Anderson Elementary School, and the recommendation is Anastasia Brown. I've been told I have to make this recommendation quick, and you'll see why in a moment. Currently serves as a teacher at Anderson Elementary. She taught at Parsley, and her contract will be effective until June 30th, 2020. She has a bachelor in science and elementary ed from Schippenberg University in Schippenberg, PA. She received a master of arts in executive leadership studies from Gardner Web, where I taught her several of her classes. It's my recommendation to, for Ms. Anastasia Brown.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a second. All, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Ms. Brown, do you tell us who you brought with you?
My husband Colin and my son Carson. We have another one on the way, hopefully tomorrow. I'm very excited about this opportunity. Thank you very much.
And her principal is here, Ms. Holland? All right, our next recommendation is for an Assistant Principal at Eaton Elementary School, and that recommendation is Dee Brent Hall. Mr. Hall currently serves as a teacher at Eaton, previously taught at Acme Delco and the Hallsborough Artesia Elementary School with the Columbus County Schools. Completed his administrator internship at Wrightsboro, Eaton Elementary, and Noble Middle Schools. His contract will be effective until June 30th, 2020. Mr. Hall received a BA in elementary education and a master's in school administration, both from UNCW.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
All right, Mr. Hall? To bring guests?
Yes, thank you guys for the opportunity. I have my husband Meyer here, and then my husband Peter, Mike here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next recommendation is for the Assistant Principal at Isaac Bear. For those who don't know, they used to be coordinators at Isaac Bear originally, but last year we converted those positions to Assistant Principals, so the recommendation is Jean Hall, who currently serves as the IB Coordinator and Theory of Knowledge Instructor at Hoggard High School. Previously taught French and English as a second language at Hoggard. Additionally, she served as a traditional freshman seminar instructor and assistant of instructional technology for secondary education and education leadership with UNCW. Her contract will be effective until June 30th, 2020. Ms. Hall received a BA of Arts in French and a Master's of Art in Teaching from the University of Louisville. I recommend Ms. Hall.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
All right, Ms. Hall? Thought I saw you come in.
Two of mine. These are the only people at my house tonight. My daughter, so be it, and my son Jude, who are also students.
And she will be working with Dr. Sullivan, who is also here tonight. All right, the reason why Mr. May is here. My next recommendation is for Assistant Principal at Murray Middle School, and that recommendation is Jesse May. Currently serves as an Assistant Principal at East Gaston County Schools. Previously served as an art teacher with the Charlotte MEC Schools and an art teacher in Lincoln County. His contract will be effective until June 30th, 2020. He has a BA, a Bachelor of Science in Art Education from Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania and a Master's in Executive Leadership from Gardner Web University. I introduce Mr. Philip May for the recommendation.
Hear a motion?
Send it.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
All right. Thank you for coming. Principal we'll be working with is here tonight, Mr. Philip Sutton. I did get a call from your superintendent who is not really happy with me. Our next recommendation is for Trask Middle School, and that recommendation is Scott Anderson, who currently, who served as an interim principal. Sorry. We're still at Murray. Second recommendation for Murray, he lost both of his assistant principals this year, is Dr. Katie Fink, who currently serves as a teacher at Trask Middle School. Previously served as a teacher at Hoggard High School and Laney High School, as well as Cape Fear Community College Adult High School. She completed her administrative internship at Trask Middle and at Parsley, and her contract will be effective until June 30th, 2020. I will tell you, it's not listed on here, she's a former district and regional teacher of the year. Dr. Fink received her Bachelor of Arts in Sociology, 612 Social Studies and Licensor from UNCW, a master's degree in education, curriculum instruction, and supervision, and a master's in school administration add-on licensure, both from UNCW, and will complete her doctorate in education leadership at UNCW. I recommend Dr. Katie Fink.
Hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Dr. Fink? Who you got with you?
Well, I've got my good friend Danielle Smallwood here. She's also a teacher at Murrayville. My husband is a Wilmington firefighter, but maybe tonight he's on duty. And of course, Mr. Sutton is here as well. Thank you.
Philip, you can have your first administrative meeting right here. All right, Trask Middle School Assistant Principal, it's my pleasure to recommend Scott Anderson. Scott currently served as an interim Assistant Principal at Hoggard High School. Previously served as the Wellness Coordinator for New Hanover County, as well as the Health and Physical Education Teacher at the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. Additionally, served as a health and PE teacher at Brunswick County Academy High School, as well as Holly Shelter and Trask Middle. His contract will be effective June, until June 30th, 2020. He has a Bachelor of Science in Physical Education from Pfeiffer University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from Gardner Web University. I present Mr. Scott Anderson.
Hear a motion?
Send it.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Scott, who you got with you?
Well, I have my wife Catherine, my daughters Charlotte and Marley, and we are also expecting Thursday.
It is a busy week in the ministry. Scott's principal's at a conference in Chicago this evening, that's why she could not be here. But he did bring his former principal with him. All right, our last administrative recommendation is for the Supervisor of Certified Talent Manager, Division of Human Resources, and this is Ms. Susan Sellers. Currently, Ms. Sellers is serving as Principal of Cottington for three days. We made the appointment, she had applied for this position and was offered this position, so that's the timeline there. Previously served as the Principal of Freeman School of Engineering and a school, as well as a school transformation coach with the NCDPI, and a lead achievement coach and principal with Duplin County Schools. She has taught at Pender High, Pender County Schools, Union School with Sampson County. She has a bachelor's degree in secondary English education and a master's degree in school administration, both from UNCW. It's my pleasure to recommend Susan Sellers for this position.
Hear a motion?
Send it.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
I'm solo tonight. I'm married to a high school football coach, and if anybody says that starts August 1st, wrong. It's all year long. He's at football practice in my, our only daughter stayed in Greepole this year. She'll be a junior at East Carolina and will be an elementary education teacher in two more years, so I'm very, very excited about this opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you.
And her supervisor will be Dr. Wilmers, who is here tonight.
Very good. Thank you.
Now, to find it, do you guys need a group picture? So, if all of our new, if all of our new appointments would meet these two ladies here, they will take care of you.
Are we gonna go on with the meeting?
Yes. I'm gonna just kinda let them get, I think she's taking them out.
All right, next item on our agenda, Superintendent's Report, District 2 Meeting, Dr. Markley.
We, the school board annually rotates the district that serves as the host for the regional meeting. I think all the board members have been to one or more of those meetings. We're not up this year, but the district that is up is unable to do it, so they've asked us to host this year.
Because they know we always do a good job.
Now, there is work involved in hosting, so we brought this to the board for your consideration, and if you let us know what your wishes are tonight, we'll talk to the School Board Association tomorrow.
Okay.
Definitely, I think we'd be proud to host.
Absolutely.
And most likely would do it at Hoggard High School. It's a large enough facility to accommodate everyone. to accommodate everyone.
Mr. Ashley?
Well, Hogard is, we want to show our new facility and it's a great location.
One thing is Hogard doesn't have an auditorium.
Well, we have forty-some people last time, I don't think you're going to need an auditorium.
I mean, that's, that's my only, that would be my only thought, I mean, normally everyone I've ever been to, there's, there's been, kind of where they have the general session and the auditorium, I mean, it's just, other than doing it in the cafeteria, does Hogard got a big enough space that we could do it, or we're going to do it in the-
We've got a brand, we have a brand-new gym.
Okay, you going to do it in the gym?
We can do it in the gym, we can make a-
Okay, all right, I have no problem with-
We can set up chairs and-
Just make sure the food's good.
Well, we've got, we've got draft menus here.
Well, I'm just saying, we have to, the other places have good food, we need to make sure ours is good.
You must have been to one like-
I have.
I know where we can get some entertainment-
I went this past year.
And bring them down, right?
We'll actually, I mean, the central office will coordinate the event.
So, when you say work, in terms of just, you know, orchestrating the, who goes where, what time, so what time would it start?
Typically, they start in the, in the, right after school at four o'clock.
Okay, so I would say just determining who has open space at that time, which school?
Well, what, what, September the 6th or something?
Yeah, it's that first week in September.
First week of September.
Who determines the breakout sessions, is that the School Board Association?
School Board Association will give us one or two sessions and they do the rest.
Okay.
And I like your topics, I think that would be good to share.
And it won't cost us anything as a per diem-
They'll reimburse us on a per diem basis for the meals.
What was your topic again?
One of the things I thought we would highlight is we have an excellent BT program, or Beginning Teacher Program, that's received recognition, and they've agreed to do that. We had several other topic suggestions that are escaping me at the moment.
Okay.
CTEC.
Yeah, our CTEC program as well would be the other one that I, probably the two that I would suggest that we highlight.
All right, then. Go with it.
Can I get that as a formal vote?
All right, do I hear a motion that we accept the District 2 Meeting to be held at Hogard High School and that the-
Why don't you say, we'll, here and we may, we'll double-check the location to be determined?
All right, all right, then we'll leave it at that. Do we, I hear a motion-
I move that we, that our district hold the-
District 2.
Meeting-
Yeah.
In September.
Yes.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Yep.
All right. Okay, next item, consensus items, personnel, Dr. Wilmers.
Mr. Chairman, would request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Need for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Change of school assignment, Dr. Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ask that you approve these releases to, of students who are, whose parents are employed in the districts that surround us as a matter of routine, please.
Hear a motion?
Need for approval?
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Next item, old business, policies for second reading. Policy 6121, employment administrator supervisory personnel. Policy 6232, staff development opportunities. Policy 6234, license renewal. Policy 6350, evaluation of classified personnel, employees, I'm sorry. Policy 6412, extracurricular and non-instructional duty assignments. Policy 6433, safety belt use by employees. Policy 6445, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying by officials, employees, volunteers, and visitors. Appendix G, Ms. Nichols.
We had some very good discussion at our last meeting with the first reading, if you have any questions, you can certainly address them with Dr. Wilmers, other than that, I move that we accept them.
Have a motion to accept all the policies?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion?
Yes. I, I think you've got a lot of policies here that are worthy of voting on, this is second reading?
Yes.
Could you briefly talk about what each one of these is and what you're trying to accomplish?
Sure, we can. When you go through the, of course, the personnel policies, and when you look at 6121, it's the employment of administrators supervisory personnel, and it lays out the guidelines that we use when we hire, recruit, and then employ administrators in the schools and in the central office. Let me just start back to the front here. The assignment and transfer of staff establishes the process that we use when teachers or personnel want to transfer within the system, both on a voluntary or an involuntary process. Staff development opportunities establishes what we do for teachers typically, we do for all personnel, but mainly for teachers in meeting their licensure requirements, so that every five years they can renew their license, and establishes that with them, what kind of professional development they want, working closely with instruction, so that we know what the teachers need and where we can help them. The license renewal is the next one, which kind of piggybacks on that, what are the qualifications that we do, or what are the qualifications that state, we need to meet working with our teachers, we work very strongly with them to make sure that they've met those qualifications and their license can continue. Evaluation of classified employees is a process that we use when we evaluate classified employees, that is support personnel, our folks that are non-exempt, and those are the folks that we, we do a single evaluation on each year, it's not as complex as we do with certified, but it's still very important, and I think we've improved in that area because of the policy.
So, Dr. Wilmers, this was not a new policy, this was an adjustment of an existing policy.
That's correct, it was an existing policy.
Can you speak to what was changed?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shaw, I think it's the intent of the Policy Committee, what we're doing is going back through all the levels of the policies, because they haven't been updated in several years.
Just last year, we go every year.
So, we're, we're looking at some of those and updating some of the language and that.
That's really what I was trying to accomplish, so for the public-
Been read where he's made the, we've made the changes.
Yes, I've seen it, but I'm trying to document it for the public, what we're, what we're voting on.
And that, and that's what we're doing, we're not necessarily changing the policies, we're, we're reviewing the policies and make sure they're, they're still consistent or updated where we need to update them.
But that's really what I was trying to accomplish, is if we had a change in the policy, if it was significant, that we discussed what that was, so that the public knew what we were voting on.
See, there, I would say there's not a lot of really significant changes that are going to impact employees, a lot of it was where we were changing the policy to meet current state guy, or state requirements that may have changed when the policy was first done, the actual process that employees will go through these steps has pretty well stayed the same. The Policy Committee's done a real good job of just helping the language, actually making it a little clearer and meeting state guidelines, but as far as what really impacts employees, I think this has remained pretty consistent.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Next item on the agenda under old business, guiding principles and timeline for redistricting, Appendix H, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we're requesting your approval of the guiding principles and timelines for redistricting. These documents were updated based on the boardwork session that we had on May 28th. The updates were then distributed to the board on June 1st. The major changes, there was really only one change in the guiding principle, principles, which I thought was a good recommendation, we changed the numbering to bullets, because they are not listed in priority order. The elementary and middle school timelines were accelerated, we accelerated the planned development phase for your request, and we also allowed more time for public input. Elementary redistricting has a one-year prior notice, so the public notice or final approval by the board and of August 2019, implementation year, school year of 2020-21. The middle and high school has a ten-month prior notice and implementation, excuse me, of 2019-20 school year. So, we're asking for your approval of, of these documents tonight.
Need a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
I have a second, discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson, when will the proposed maps for, since we're doing this in stages, we're doing high school, middle school, high school first, and then elementary, when will the proposed maps for middle school, high school be available for public review?
We're going to-
Work session on the 18th.
So, we're presenting, we're going to present those to you at the, at your board work session July 18th.
So, next week.
And, and they'll be available, we're going to post them on our website as quick as possible after that meeting, so by the end of that week, they'll be available for comment on our website.
Any other questions?
Just, just to be clear, the redistricting committee has been working on those, the middle school and high school previous to now, correct? So, I mean, y'all have met several times, and obviously, we started this process back last year for high schools.
We actually brought principals, we've been working on it, we brought principals and teachers in to look at some of the changes and updates we've made as well.
Okay.
Questions? Discussion? All right. If there's no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of the guiding principles and timeline for redistricting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Can I say something, please?
I don't know.
Control of the screen, being able to back up and go forward on the agenda. Mr. Hayes and I were just speaking, it'll scroll forward and we want to see something that is a little bit farther back, is there any way for us to gain control of the screen?
We'll have to talk to technology about that.
These screens are really, you see what the public sees on these screens, if you wanted a second screen to, to check with, you could bring your, your laptop and you could do it on your lap, you would have that on your laptop. But this is really, you're seeing what's on the two screens behind you. So, these are, these aren't, you don't have, we don't have any control over these, Ms. Anita over there does.
She does.
Maybe we needed some, like Navy signaling back.
I raised that question one time.
We'll get some signal flags done.
Right, there you go.
Because we were doing like this, and nothing was happening.
We knew that wasn't going to work. Yeah, we knew that.
That's, that's past technology, we're in modern times. All right, new business, Canvas Contract, Appendix I, Ms. Brunson.
Yes, request that the board approve the three-year Canvas Contract with Instructure. This will allow us to save money in the future years.
Need for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In general, I know that this Canvas is the system that, that DPI has chosen, correct, for the, for the entire, for North Carolina school, schools, is that correct?
Well, DPI, they use it for NCVPS. There are other learning management systems that districts use, they did get us a discounted purchasing uniform, but it's up to us to decide whether we want to use it or not. We've been using it for the past, I'd say, four years or so, or since 1516. It's a, it's slow adoption, we also have some teachers that use Google Classroom and a couple other learning management systems.
And in general, have we, has it done what we needed it to do?
It does, it does take some adjustment, teachers, some more training for teachers on just learning management systems in general, because you're, you're changing how you teach, you're pretty much putting everything online and kind of controlling things that way, so there's still a lot more training, the adoption isn't, isn't a fast adoption, and it's not something we're forcing teachers to do.
We actually use it for our principal meetings as well.
Okay.
Don't you explain exactly what it is?
It is, it's a learning management system, so basically, it's a tool that teachers can use where kids are able to log in, they're able to see all their assignments, teachers can have their syllabus there, there's links to resources that they have, both created by the teacher as well as online, assessments are in there, they're able to do, like polls and blogs and different things, and kind of ask teachers, you know, comment on other people's, I can't think of the correct word, on other people's posts, you know, on a different topic, so it's, it's basically a way of kind of running your classroom, you do not have to be one-to-one to use it, you're able to use it in, in small group as well as, you know, in a big group, you can even just use it as a resource for your documents where kids can have access to.
My son actually has all of his, he uses it for all of his courses, his students have access to it, so when he gives assignments, they're accessing those assignments through Canvas online, if he's giving a presentation, it's already loaded into Canvas, so the kids can go back later and, and review the presentation.
Yeah, I mean, in general, since we don't have much of a textbook budget, I was just wondering if, if there was a way to make sure that we are accessing Canvas or, or Google Classroom effectively, or each teacher is being encouraged to do so as, as, you know, an extra tool and a collaborative tool at that.
They are, and as a matter of fact, I think LaShawn's getting ready to tell you a project that they're working on this summer.
Good.
Yes, we're actually working this year to create curriculum online for our teachers, so we'll be engaging in a curriculum creation project that will be hosted in Canvas, which we believe will encourage teachers to access it, not only for the resources, but also to use directly with their students.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, Mental Health Service Contract, Dr. Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ask that you approve our mental health contract that we have with our Health Department each year. Lot of discussion about this issue, with a lot of this, a lot of the things that have gone, that have gone on across the nation, the need for mental health services in our schools, the county has actually stepped up to the plate, they have given us three additional mental health workers for our schools that, at no additional cost for us, our contract is the same as it was last year, instead of having thirteen, we have sixteen and a supervisor, so we think this is going to be a really good partnership, really good for our schools, and the ability, even though they are stationed at, at various schools, we can actually get them to the schools that we need them to get them to when we need them, they're very flexible and work with us very well, so it's been a very good partnership over the years, so I ask that you approve it.
Have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
This is-
No, wait a minute, I, I got down here.
Oh, sorry.
Dr. Holiday, you said we're getting three new mental health providers and a supervisor, is that correct?
The supervisor was already there, I'm getting three new people, yes, so seven-
Putting them, spreading them out, what type of, you know, high school, middle school, elementary school?
What we do is we look at the need for mental health services in a school, the number of IEPs that we have, the number of 504s that we have, the number of incidents that we have, and we're able to make the decisions to put them there, I can get you the total list of them, probably after this meeting.
That's what I'm just wondering, because-
Yeah, it's a rubric that we use to establish where they're based, but even if a child is not at one of those schools where they're based, we can get them to the mental health professional.
And that was kind of leading into my next question of, because this was really focused, the county, I think, was focused on the school safety issue, and one of the things we identified was the need for additional mental health providers.
Yes, sir.
So, will we coordinate those to make sure they're in the appropriate places, I mean, obviously, you see some of the safety issues at the high schools.
Yes, sir, we, we do manage that, and they do work with us, and Kristen Jackson from my office works with the Health Department on making sure we have the folks where we need them. Good question.
Shaw, you had a question?
Um, yeah, that answered most of it, you've got it split into two line items, is there a reason for that?
Let me see.
You've got $578,000 in one category and a hundred and one-
Yeah, it's just different funding sources is all, yes, that's all.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, consideration of bid for Hogard High School Roof Section B1 Replacement, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The roof project at Hogard High School is funded through the 2014 School Bond Program. Project consists of- Project consists of complete removal and replacement of roof sector B one, which is the roof over the main two-story building. Bids were received on June twenty-first, and tonight, we ask your approval to award the contract for construction to Highland Roofing Company in the amount of eight hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Anderson, what, when you repair the roof, is there a, one, a life expectancy for a new roof, and two, is there some sort of warranty that comes with that roof?
Yes, sir, there is, we'll be going back with a single ply PVC system, and it'll have a twenty-year manufacturer's warranty.
How many bids did you receive for this?
The bid tabulation is attached, and we had a total of three bids, four other contractors were given the opportunity to bid, but did not submit a bid.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, North Carolina Educational Lottery application for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, capital construction projects, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The capital construction needs were identified and considered in the twenty-eighteen, nineteen capital budget process. Capital budget was approved by the Board of Education on May first, and the county commissioners on June fourth. These are the applications for funding through the North Carolina Education Lottery, and these are the projects that are listed there, CTEC High School, Phase Two renovations, Alderman Elementary, Phase One HVAC, Sunset Park Ceiling Tower Replacement, New Hanover High School, George West Building Underground Cabling, electrical upgrades at various school campuses, lighting upgrades at various school campuses, Wrightsboro Elementary Heat Pump Replacement, Veterans Park Boiler Replacement, and then painting at various school campuses. We're asked for your approval of these applications tonight, and if approved, we'll forward them to the county commissioners for consideration.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. I do have one question, the Veterans Park Boiler, is that the third one, or is that paying for one of the two that we authorized in our capital expenditures?
The, the Veterans Park Boiler Replacement, during the budget process, we had made the change to replace two boilers instead of just one, so this will include both boilers.
Okay, so this is not, there was a third boiler too, if I'm not mistaken? Is there a third boiler?
I think there was only two.
I thought there was three of them, okay, that's, that's fine then, thank you. Alright, any other questions or comments?
Just one. So, you're using lottery funds to do this, but you also undoubtedly have other projects that are paid for by either bond money or capital outlay, is that be accurate?
We do, the second page is a listing of all of the capital that was approved in the budget, and the last two columns have a revenue source, so you're, you're correct that the, the approved projects are split between lottery and local capital.
It's just a quirk of the lottery laws in terms of timing, that you approve this at a different time than you do the, you approve the whole capital budget together, but the lottery funds, you really don't get to approve until now. Mary Hayes can give you a more detailed explanation, I can see her over there.
We'll actually bring back an amendment once we have state approval and, and included in the final budget.
Is, is the, just to be clear, the work at CTEC, is that on the Rock Church?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, New Hanover County Board of Education Sponsored Field Trips, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, would ask the board's approval of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen School Board Sponsored Field Trips.
Need for approval?
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item F, attestation, Dr. Smith.
Yes, would ask the board's approval of the required attestations that principals sign, signifying that their school improvement teams are in compliance with the general statute, as well as that they have held the meetings in accord, in accordance with those requirements as well.
Need for approval?
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item two thousand, item G, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Budget Resolution, appendix O, Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The budget resolution is presented in the same format as last year, and it incorporates the changes that we discussed during the budget process in your recommended county budget, and also includes the, the final state changes in salary schedules and benefit rates and those types of things, so we did have to make some slight adjustments to our original calculations, but it was pretty close. The, the final fund balance recommendation that's included in this will still leave our estimated undesignated fund balance at six percent.
How much, sorry?
Six.
Sir?
Six percent.
Six percent, okay.
Need for approval?
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question, what is the total appropriation?
The total, with all funds, is two hundred and seventy-seven million, five hundred fifty-four thousand, ninety-four dollars.
Okay, there it is, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
I would just like to say thank you to all the board members who were part of this process, it was, and the work with the county commissioners, we would not have gotten here without the, without the help from you folks, so thank you.
Well, I'd, I'd like to add that the county commissioner stepped up this year in a big way. At twenty-eight-hundred, is that right?
Yes.
Last item on new business, school nurse contract, Dr. Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I would ask that you approve our school nurse contract, where we have our school nurses assigned to our various schools, this contract with the New Hanover County Health Department. Once again, the county has stepped in, we are getting two additional nurses this year at the same cost that we got last year for the total price, but it didn't go up on us, the county's taking the, whatever cost it would go up, and also giving us two additional nurses. So, again, our school nurse program, which I think is, is an outstanding program, where we have medical coverage in, in all of our schools, so ask that you please approve this contract.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Again, I would just echo what was said earlier about the partnership with the county commissioners.
Absolutely.
We've got an additional nurses, additional mental health, we saw a significant increase in our, in our local budget. Not a lot of counties can concede they have that partnership, so.
Well, I think in this case, the fact that we met with the county and explained our situation to them, and they were willing to listen, for that I appreciate it. Alright, have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I just noticed, I think the dates on the contract are incorrect. Should be eighteen, nineteen, I believe, says seventeen, eighteen.
If you make the changes to the correct dates, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bullitt. Alright.
He's all rested, he can do all this stuff, the rest of us got work.
Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Does anyone have any correspondence they wish to share with us?
I would just note the correspondence that I sent to you from one of our students in the, in the Thursday board packet that all of you got. You don't always, your, thanks for the work that you do as a board, so I hope you all took a moment to, to look at that.
Did, did. Alright, announcements, New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a redistricting work session on Wednesday, July the eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at four P.M. in room three oh one of the administration building, and that's down on Carolina Beach Road. Second, the next regular meeting of New Hanover County Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, August the seventh, at five-thirty in the BOE Center. Now, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, paragraph A, sub-paragraph three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.